Alec, you ready?
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board meeting of April 1st, 2025. And it's not an April Fool's joke. This meeting is being recorded by NCM and also on Google Meet. The format for this evening is any parties wishing off of comments or testify on matters before the board, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. The applicant or their representative will address the board first and provide evidence and testimonies supporting their proposal. Members of the board may ask questions during or after the applicant's presentation. Following any questions from the board, we'll open up the hearing to the general public and any town officials to speak on the proposal. You can ask, state your name and address for the record. Any questions for the applicant should go through the chair. And following that, if the applicant will give an opportunity to address any concerns and make a final statement. At that point, the board will consider continuing the public hearing or moving to close the public hearing and choosing to process the deliberation vote on the proposal. Everything before us tonight requires four votes of the five members sitting. So first on the agenda this evening, I will read the public record. There's 18 Briawood Lane, request for special permit under section 5.4 of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on April 1st, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. in the request of Bryant-Aaron case 25-6 with respect to property located at 18 Briawood Lane, Norwood, Mass. 02062. In the single residence zoning districts, this hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, 02062. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw section 5.4 to construct an addition to the rear of the existing residence that would increase the habit of Floria by more than 25%. The structure is pre-existing, non-conforming in frontage and left side setback and lot area. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing calmdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Would you name an address for the record and tell us what you'd like to do there?
Sure. Bryant-Aaron, 962 West Street, Rentham, Mass. I'm representing the Drakefords. I'm also the contractor. You pretty much spelled out everything, which was great. We're looking for basically 31.5% versus the 25%, which I think is about 364 square feet. Doing the little research, Hawthorne, the next street over, went for pretty much the same variance, was granted 5 to 0. And that's kind of what we're looking for. I understand that what I'm hearing is that the May meeting, you guys are changing this to 75% as a proposal.
Well, that's for town meetings, but right now you're under the 25%.
Sure. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns for me?
Yep, we'll start down the end with Dan. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
No? Matt?
Not at the moment, no.
My only question is, so the height of the addition relative to the existing structure? I didn't see any numbers if I missed them on the plan, but is it under the...
It should be equal or lower.
Okay.
Yeah, because it won't go above the ridge line.
Okay.
So we'll be probably tying it to that or just below, so it'll match.
Got it. Okay. That was it for now, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Thank you. All right, Rachel?
Yeah, and I'm just making note. It looks like you have a greater setback on the side than the existing structure.
So we met all sides. The side setback was 15. We went 15 for the other side, which would be the right side, already made it.
Yeah.
And the front and the rear weren't an issue. So we made sure that everything was in line with all the setbacks for that purpose.
Yeah, I think it's really just looking at the square footage percentage increase and nothing else, it looks like.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, thank you for providing the percentage, because we always like to get that into the record and the total square feet. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you don't have any questions, we'll just open it up to the public and ask if there's anyone here that would like to address the board regarding this proposal.
There's no one on Google Meet.
Okay, seeing no one, hearing from no one. Are there any further comments for the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and move to deliberations.
So moved.
Moved by Matt and seconded by Shannon to close the public hearing. Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt? Yes.
Yes. And I vote yes. The public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
I think to Rachel's point, it's not becoming more non-conforming in the frontage or on the side setback. The height won't be an issue going beyond what's already there. It's not out of scale or out of character with other homes that are in the neighborhood. And most of it is, you know, taking place in the back of the property, so I don't see any impediments when we're thinking about the criteria that we have to think about for the special permit for this one. So I'm comfortable with moving forward as presented tonight.
Any others?
No, I agree.
Yep. Certainly meets all the requirements for a special permit, and you are correct. Hopefully, a couple of months, people like yourself won't have to be here, but that's good. So no other comments. The public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve as presented. Moved by Shannon, seconded by Matt. On the motion, is it Dan or David?
Dan.
Dan, yeah, I thought so. Yeah, Dan on the motion? Yes. Matt?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Good luck. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a great... Good luck and thank you. Okay, the next one is, there's two. We'll do each separately. And we'll do 163 Dean Street first. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on April 1st, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. in the request of Bruno Collantonio, case 25-7 with respect to property located at 163 Dean Street, Norwood, Ma. 02062, in the general residence and manufacturing zoning district. This hearing will be held in the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a variance pursuant to zoning bylaw section 10.2.2 in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, to construct a two-family dwelling. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing calmdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And I see Mr. Hearn there, but I know we have some waivers that were asked.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. There is a waiver for the record. David Hearn Jr., of Gellman and Cabral, on behalf of Bruno Collantonio. Well, I wanted to speak to that if you needed me to, but I did provide a short memo on it.
Yep. Okay, we'll do the waivers first. So there's a request by Mr. Hearn. Dave, tell us what the waivers are.
Yes, it's a request for a waiver of the requirement of providing building plans as part of the variance application. We don't have, my client's son, Frank Collantonio, who is taking the leading role in this, has some ideas of what it might look like, and we have some renderings we're happy to give you, but we don't have actual building plans at this point because it would be a significant expense to prepare plans for something where we don't know yet whether we'd get the discretionary relief that we're asking for from the board. I can assure you that any building that is built on this site will comply with setback requirements, lot area requirements, except for the small amount we're looking for in a variance, but all the setback requirements, yard requirements, can easily be met on this site. So that, you know, and I don't know to what extent the board is interested in the design of a building, but Frank has given me, and I'm happy to share them with you, an idea of a couple of townhouses that would be side by side. They would, he believes they would fit in. There may be some changes, and this is very preliminary, but frankly, these are the ones you gave me. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to pass these out.
Yeah.
These are not detailed building plans, and they're not intended to be a commitment that it will be exactly this. But the idea is something attractive. I've suggested that we wouldn't have a garage under, but we would have a garage to the side or between the sections also. And this would... But oftentimes, we've had residential applications without coming with full-blown plans, and you often see just renderings that show perhaps what it might look like. Again, something that would be attractive, fit on the site, it would not violate any of the yard requirements or anything like that. But to commission full-blown plans before we come in and know where this is going to go is an expense for a small project like this, residential, that we'd like to avoid.
Yep, okay. Is there any concern or comment on the waiver request by the applicant? There's a motion to grant the waiver request. There's been a motion to grant the waiver request regarding submission of building plans.
Mr. Chairman, what do we need for a vote for the waiver request?
I think the waiver is a simple majority, isn't it?
This would be a simple majority. I think we're not talking about the actual relief. We're talking about a procedural matter.
Yeah. And there's been a motion made to waive, to grant the waiver for building plans. Obviously, they'll be reviewed by the building inspector to make sure they meet all the code requirements and the setbacks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Dan. On the motion, Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And, okay, so the waiver's granted.
Thank you.
Where's Power Lane in Norwood? Is that a new street?
That's the one off of Dean Street, right, when you come up off of Route 1.
Yep.
There were some condos built in there several years ago.
Oh, I know where they are. Yep. Yep, I know where it is. Okay. Thank you.
It's something that was used. That's where they came from.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. All right, go ahead with your proposal. The waiver's been granted.
All right. This, I'm speaking to 163 Dean Street, which is the first of the two applications. That is a piece of land on the section of Dean Street between Pleasant Street and Route 1. The actual property, which my client purchased a couple of months ago, has an area of 22,385 square feet, the entire lot. There is an old, single-family house on it, as well as a garage, that my client would like to replace with a two-family house. The difficulty in terms of having this as a matter of right is that there is a zoning district line that goes through the property, and that's shown on the plan. And we have within the general residence zone 14,974 square feet, where 15,000 feet would be required for a two-family house. We've got several thousand feet beyond that, but it's in the manufacturing zone. And under section 2.4 of the bylaw, where a district boundary line divides the lot, the lot will be considered as divided into separate portions, and development is supposed to meet the requirements of the district in which it's located, as the lot area, frontage and the yards. We satisfy, we can easily satisfy the requirements of frontage. We have 100.50 feet, where 90 feet are required. There is sufficient room with that frontage and the lot width to build a house with the setbacks that are required in that district. The setback is 15 feet for the side, the front setback, let me get the table, I have not memorized it yet, but likely never will. The setback, front setback is 20 feet, side yard 15 feet, and rear yard 30 feet. We have more than enough area there. It is the shortage of 26 square feet that is the problem and that requires relief. I did the arithmetic, and that shortage is less than 2/10 of 1% of the area required. The 26 square feet works out to 0.1733. So it's a very small amount that we're short on this. In fact, when this lot was laid out, it was bigger, but 100 square feet were taken back in 1951 when Dean Street was widened. So, but for that taking, we'd have plenty of land within the general residence district. The concerns that zoning usually is directed at in terms of crowding and, you know, keeping density within reasonable levels, safety and so forth, granting this relief would not cause any problems with respect to any of those. There's plenty of room, as I said, to build. It's just this artificial line of the zoning districts that on the ground you wouldn't even know was there. But it cuts through the back of this lot, and it cuts out enough square footage, so that we're short 26 square feet. Without the relief that we're looking for, my clients are limited to a single-family house, which in this district, this district is a mix of singles and two families. From their point of view, considering the cost of building, cost of acquisition, the fact that this is a condition that doesn't generally apply within the district, this condition of having a zone line cut through at the point where it does, leaving them short that very small amount, does create a hardship. And I believe that relief can be granted, as I said, without violating any of the interests that are sought to be protected by zoning, without causing any harm to the public good. The result of granting the relief is that it would allow a two-family house at a time when we do need more housing. My client is experienced in building houses, and both for sale and for rental, and they would like to do that with respect to this property. I'm happy to take any questions, but that is what we're looking for, 26 square feet on a lot that has a total of area of 22,385 square feet. So it is a de minimis amount that we are missing, but we're here because we're missing those square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
I hear you. So I want you to help me get over the hurdles for variances.
I'll do my best.
Shape-soil topography. Shape-soil topography. Where is this shape-soil or topography issue?
Well, I think we've got a, I think we've got a shape issue in that we've, number one, we've got an unusual condition here in that it's because of the zoning. You've got a line right through the middle of the lot. We've also lost 400 square feet in the front that was part of this lot. So we would have had 15,374 square feet, 400, 374, I guess, if we didn't have that taking. So, I mean, if, a way to look at it is it is an action of a government that has taken, perhaps thinking accidentally, two things. They took 400 square feet and they drew a line without necessarily any reference to why the line was drawn there. It leaves us with a lot, if you look at the lot, it's not exactly rectangular, but it's, this one is mostly rectangular, and we have a shortage. So soil conditions, I'm not aware of any difficulties with soil conditions. I'm saying that our shape is a reduced shape because we haven't got the 26 square feet that we had. And this is being very careful. I mean, I've known some surveyors who've said to me, "Well, these things are subject to a little bit of error here and there." But I'm saying to you, in this case, I have to rely on what Gloss Engineering told us and in their calculation. And, you know, I think on the merits of the thing, this is a, this is a very simple question. I know the variances become, can become difficult, but I think the argument here is that the greater good, the de minimis aspect of this, the fact that we have, I may look at my notes on this, but that we have a, an unusual condition that is, doesn't really apply in most of the district. There are other lots on this street that also have the line going through them a little bit, but they have all the area. They weren't cut out. This is just the way the neighborhood was laid out. So I think that in this case, if you look at the situation, there's no way to comply with this requirement. And there was a, I think there was a case in Brookline some years ago, there was no way to comply because of certain conditions, and they needed some relief on it. Yes, you could do something with the building, but you weren't going to be able to use it with the lot, but you weren't going to be able to use it for what it really could be or should be used for. And relief was granted there, and it had more, I think, I forget the details, it might have been more slope than anything. But in this case, we have unusual circumstances affecting the land or structures, in this case, the land, that there is a manufacturing boundary line there that cuts off 24, or whatever number it does, but we're only looking for 20, I'm sorry, 26 square feet. And there have been some cases in the past where there are, you know, various deficiencies that lots have that allow for, still for relief. Frontage deficiencies, the Paulding case is one where there was a significant deficiency, but the lot otherwise had the area that was needed. In this case, we have in our lot well more than the 15,000 square feet. It's just this artificial line that says you can't, you've got to make it comply. So as far as shape goes, we have to look at this shape as if it's been compressed and where that zone line is drawn. And I think that's the difference from what you sometimes see elsewhere.
That Paulding case that you mentioned on frontage?
Yeah.
I view that as distinct from area because, and anyone could have deficiency in area depending on what you want to do with the property. Was that because of the shape of the lot, like pork chop type of shape?
It was. It was. That was an unusual case. I tried that case.
Yeah. As far as impact of other lots within the district, I see that there are other lots just on this snapshot of the plan that we have, where that line does go through multiple lots. How do we view that as not applying generally to the district because every lot...
If you look at the general residence district, go across the street, there's no manufacturing district cutting off the back ends of lots. You've got a few lots on Dean Street, from Pleasant Street down through our lot, that are affected, a few lots, maybe half a dozen. So not generally affecting the district in which it's located, it's not affecting the general residence district in that neighborhood, just a few of these lots. And is it affecting those lots? They have, the property next door, I think, is being converted to a two-family. Now, they have different frontages also, so if you have a different width, you can get your 15,000 square feet without having to go back as far. Our lot was laid out with more than 15,000 feet within what is now the general residence district, but it got taken away in a taking. And again, there's not, you know, where do you draw these lines when you draw them? And it may be that part of this was made manufacturing because there is an easement in the rear that for the gas, Algonquin Gas has an easement in the rear of these lots because it used to be the Boston, what was then the Norwood Gas Company and back. Boston Gas was in there. I don't know if they still are. I think they might have some facility in there, whatever they're called currently. I guess they're not Boston Gas. So this is, this is an unusual situation compared to the rest of the general residence district, and I'm not talking about the general residence district throughout the town. I'm talking in that immediate neighborhood. You go along other sections of Dean Street, across the street, they don't have this.
Just to back up, Algonquin has an easement on this lot?
Yeah.
There's a gas line or something underneath in the back?
Under the back end of it.
In the manufacturing district?
In the manufacturing. That may have affected why some of it got zoned manufacturing when they decided to draw lines based on a use at that time. So that, there's a condition, but for that, this might have, you know, might just have been another residential lot on Dean Street.
And so the, is there unity of ownership between this and the second lot that we're going to be talking about?
Yes, same owner.
And they acquired it recently? It looked like 23 from the property card. Okay, I'll listen in. I'm, no questions for you now.
Yeah, I think the closing was in January.
Okay.
On it. And, but they've always been separate lots. We bought from the same family. At some point, it became different entities. There was an issue that came up that where it wasn't in one entity as they thought it was, but we got it fixed. So, but common ownership is, there's no merger here. There wouldn't be, I don't think, under the old rule, and there certainly isn't under the new rule since the new statute came into effect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just two things. You mentioned the house that's being converted to a two-family. That was always a two-family, just for point of... You mentioned that the house next door was being converted to a two-family, just as a point of information.
Was it?
That is all, was already a two-family.
Oh, okay. We thought that was a conversion.
The building inspector.
Yeah.
When was the taking, before we move on?
1951.
1951?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, Shannon?
And is the easement for the gas transmission line, is that showing on the parcel? Because I'm not seeing any markings for any easements. Or is everything related to the, to the gas line north, like on the top of the page?
This is the plan, Mr. Chairman, that shows the gas, it's in the title.
And this is the 163 lot, then?
That's the one next to it, actually, but I think it goes straight through.
Continue.
Okay, so we can assume that that's clipping the parcel itself?
But that would have nothing to do with this all.
Right. No, I think Ms. Churchill touched on a lot of my questions. I don't have anything else right now.
Matt?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think everybody's touched on it. Any discussions with neighbors or anybody like that, that, any feedback, any?
Haven't heard anything. I mean, everybody gets notice. I don't know if there's anybody here on it, but this whole, most of this section of Dean Street was recently sold off by the Howard family. So that property next door to us, I think, was sold, and I think there might be one other, so, because there was a Howard family that owned several properties on that stretch. We bought, my client bought two of them. The one next door, I think, changed hands, and I think there was one more at least that changed hands. So anybody we're talking to is brand new to the neighborhood, and they're probably doing this, trying to do the same thing we're doing, which is redevelop the sites, bring them up to, up to date, up to code, and put something there that's going to be appropriate for the site. So, yeah, I mean, I followed some of the sales. I actually heard about this a couple of years ago from somebody connected, but I think that after the fellow passed away, the next generation decided to sell the several parcels off. So we were dealing with them on the purchase.
I'm good, Mike. Yep. Dan?
I think you said that the lot right next door is a two-family. Are there other two families on that side of the street in this section?
When you get to the corner, I think that's at least a two-family. Do you know about two, what's over, two houses over?
Over the one at the corner.
I know about...
One on the corner is a four, the blue one in the corner there.
A lot of people live in there.
Yeah, that's a four.
Yeah, I wondered about that. So the one next door, Mr. Shannon said, has been a two-family. I don't know the one beyond that. I don't know. But, I mean, this is a neighborhood that allows for two families.
I think actually, along this small strip, there's a couple of houses, and then there's actually more industrial that takes up part of the general residence district on the Dean Street frontage.
So we're...
It looks like National Grids.
The lot we're talking about is this one right here?
The lot we're talking about is this one right here? Can you see where the line is? This is the other one we'll be talking about in a minute. There's a house there. This is overgrown, you can see, house there. That's the one Mr. Chan corrected me on, and, and thank you for that, a two-family. Then you get into all industrial down here. Back here, driveway here, then you get rojo, car wash and all that.
That was my only.
Yeah. I think the issue what we're having is, is the high mark for variance. It's a very high mark, as you know. And an undersized lot is not, is not qualified for a variance, even, even though it's a large lot, but it's got the two zoning districts, I think that's what I'm struggling with. If, there, there, there is an option to, on the next one, certainly the 163 that was before us is an existing single family. You could take, you have a 19-foot set, side setback, you could take two feet from there, and that would give you this lot we're going to talk about next. You wouldn't have to, but you'd be stuck with the single at 163. Just, if it doesn't go the way you wish, I'm just putting that out there.
Well, and I appreciate that, and we've, we've talked about that, I talked to Mr. Glossa at one point about was there any land we could borrow from anywhere. But right now, we have, we brought Peter to pay Paul, will be left with, with a single in that.
Yeah, but then you get a two on the other, on the, on the next one that we're going to talk about. It's, I mean, just making the argument that they lost 400 feet in 1951 doesn't, doesn't go for me. They bought the property, they, they knew what they were buying, so that is kind of out there. I think this is, is good, but the variance criteria, as you know, is, is a high bar.
It is, but I don't know that you often get a variance request that calls for 26 square feet on one, 35 square feet on the other, there's such a de minimis request that, that perhaps the bar is lowered somewhat to consider that.
The bar doesn't change if it's 200 feet or two feet, and you know that.
I think, I think that, I think that taking into account the possible effect in terms of derogation of the zoning bylaw, or negative effects on the neighborhood or to the town are certainly less present than when you're allowing somebody to build within a couple of feet of a boundary or in an undersized, a lot that is undersized. These lots are not undersized in reality. I mean, buildings, I asked the building commissioner, can we use the back end for parking or something like that? Absolutely. You know, accessory uses are allowed there, even though it's in the manufacturing. It's just the house we can't put there.
No, I don't disagree with you.
And we can't count that.
Yeah, like just that line where it falls?
Yeah.
It makes it difficult, okay.
Ms. Churchill, just, we kind of talked about the other factors, we didn't talk about the substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, other than building things that's expensive. Is there a unique hardship with a literal enforcement of the bylaw?
Well, if you look at the idea that people are buying property with the idea of redeveloping and, and taking old houses, or a lot with no house, and the cost of acquisition and the cost of building, and in order to make that work, and this applies to anybody who buys this type of property, or this particular property, that's a hardship that's generally going to affect. I, I know that, you know, the cases talk about, well, there's a hardship that, that applies to us but wouldn't apply to anybody else. And the courts have come down and said, if you have a hardship, it's going to affect anybody who has that property. That's, that's a legitimate hardship under 48. So in this case, we have an old, an older house there that goes back a number of years. You remember how old that house is?
No.
Yeah. An older house that, you know, it's going to have to be upgraded, you have significant expense, the better way to handle that is to put a two-family house in there, get, you know, everything up to code, everything up to today's standards. That improves the neighborhood, improves the value. So I think that on that question, there is a hardship, if you can't, if you try to do a brand-new single there, by today's standards, you're spending too much for what you're going to get. It costs so much to build houses now that most people who are looking in these neighborhoods and these zoning districts are looking at two families, because they can get more bang for the buck. If they do a nice single, it's not going to be worth it in a general residence district on a busy street like that. So what you're looking at is something that probably would be rental property, held by an owner, and you can build, you'll get a better economy of building it. That's a hardship that applies to Mr. Collington, it applies to Mr. Smith, Mr. Jones, anybody, Mrs. Brown, anybody who comes along down the road and says, I want to try to do something with this lot. So he's done that.
Just for the board, the property card says that the structure was built in 1951, so in line with when the taking for Dean came out.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
1951 per the property card?
Yeah.
For the structure. So in line with the timeline on the taking you mentioned for Dean.
Yeah. Because when we see the takings, it doesn't tell us what, what's on the lot, it just says what they're taking?
Yeah.
And what they're giving for damages and so forth. But, you know, but for that. You know, Mr. Chairman, if you're saying that the board is not inclined to?
Well, I'm not, I'm just putting it out there, we'll see how it goes, so, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure where I'm at. I think that it is a good use of this property, but when you look at the high mark that they have set for granting variances, it's a difficult one to get there, but I'm trying, as Rachel is, we're trying to get there.
Well, I think that, you know, it wouldn't allow variances under the statute or under our bylaw if there weren't cases for them. And what are the cases that you have for them? Somebody comes in with the, they've got a lot area problem, lots too, the lot itself is too small for what might be required. But you say, well, look, we can give that. Or the house is too, the only way to build the house is too close to a particular setback line. But you might give relief on that because there's just no other way to use that lot for its intended purpose. In this case, this lot, one of the intended purposes of the general residence zone is the, is two-family houses. I mean, that is where we find them, in the general residence zones, where they're allowed. You can't build a two-family house on this lot, or on the one next to it, because of this very tiny shortage that came after these lots were laid out. They did a taking. Granted, they did the taking before I was born, believe it or not, but they?
So we don't know what the zoning was at that time?
The zoning might have been less, I don't know. I don't know when the, when the 10,000 square feet came in for the general residence. That's been around a fair number of years, though.
Yeah, but we don't even know what the whole street might have been manufacturing at that time, so, all right.
Well, I, I would suggest that it probably wasn't, because if you look at the houses that are built on the corner, that's an older house. Some of the houses coming down the street on either side, those are older houses, that house that's being redone is an older house. So I would say this was probably a residential zone. And if it was not a residential zone, then, and then made one, then, again, it's an artificial line that's been drawn.
We just don't know, so there's, we don't have to get on that road. Anything else before we open it up?
No, if there are questions, then we'll hear from, if there's anybody.
Yeah, there might be some more questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Is there anyone here which to speak on this matter? Anyone here like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone on the go-to-me that would like to speak on this matter?
Doesn't seem like it.
Okay, all right. All right. Board members have any further comments for the applicant before we decide to close the public hearing and move to a vote? Is there any, Rachel, do you have anything else?
I mean, I don't object to deliberating while the public hearing is open if we wanted to, as we're discussing?
Yeah.
Get more input without having to reopen?
Yeah, no, that's fine, it's, we'll leave it open and the floor is yours.
I mean, I, I think you and I are trying to get over the hurdle to approve it. I mean, construction is expensive and that's not unique to this lot. Building a single family is putting it to use, I think ADUs probably would be allowed here, right, as like another living unit? Maybe this just comes down to pre-acquisition diligence. I mean, on the one hand, it's only like 25 something feet, but on the other, other hand, it's an arbitrary line that we're charged to enforce, and I just don't see the qualifications of a variance getting into the hurdle of whether I want to exercise my discretion to grant relief that I would like to give. But if anyone can get me over the hurdle, I'd be happy.
Yeah, I think, as I say, I think I'm in a similar position, these, the conditions were existing when the property was purchased. Something can still be done with the parcel, it is not the highest and best use for these two parcels, but it is not precluding the owner from putting anything there. I, yeah, I think it's, you know, the shape, soil, topography, the hardship, and I do want, I do appreciate that this is unique relative to the other residential parcels across the street and in the area. But as you said, Rachel, it's, this is a hard, we've had to make hard decisions before for maybe things that were a higher and better use, and it's always very challenging when it's a variance case, but I'm having a hard time, given that, you know, the shape, the soil, the topography isn't there. The hardship, the land can still be put to use. Knowledge was, you know, these are conditions that existed when the property was purchased. I can see uniqueness relative to things across the street, but that's the only one that I have sort of something to hold on to at the moment.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt?
Was the buyer aware of the limitations and the need for this variance when you bought the property?
We, we knew about it, yeah.
You did, okay.
We did, I mean, but that, that by itself is not?
I can add?
Yeah.
Name and address for the record, sir?
Frank Collington, 127 Frontier Drive, Calhoun, New Hampshire, originally from Norwood.
Thank you.
What I can speak to about the due diligence during the purchase process was that it was very close to the 15,000. After the purchase, I worked with Glossa Engineering to get an actual survey done, because previous, there hadn't been a survey done for many years. And through the title search and all the survey work, I went back and forth with Glossa Engineering. There's a small sliver, I think he said it was six-inch wide portion of the property, that he's not, he was not able to track down through the subdivision of it, because I guess originally it was a larger lot that was owned by a family, and then it got subdivided with the idea of it being 150 feet deep by 100 feet wide within the general zone, and he's not, he wasn't able to track down the six inches when I actually engaged him to perform the actual survey. So that was what, as you can see from the plans, that was what the final product was. So we did not know exactly, because it was a little bit of ambiguity prior to and during the purchase process.
Where's the six inches in regards to this plan? Is it?
It was a budding, well?
Is it this property line here? Or is it one of the, what property line is the six inches?
Let me get the plan here.
Oops. Would have been on the 163 side and with the other, would have been this side.
The neighboring property next to 163, not the?
So right here?
147, Dean?
Yeah, right.
So there's, so that would be 75 more feet if that is yours, correct?
And that's what Mr. Glossa couldn't find.
Right, he couldn't, he couldn't find it with enough certainty to put it on paper and call it part of the lot.
And this was after you purchased?
This was, yes. Because there was not a survey done prior to, so yes, it was, once we got it, we said, okay, now we need to bring Glossa Engineering on board to actually get the survey, and then we said, oh man, we're a little short.
When they, yeah, and a couple, a couple of dozen feet short.
Did you ask 147 if they had any records of their property line that could possibly clear this up? Because if you get the six inches there, obviously six inches divided by 150 is 75, and that puts you over that threshold?
Right.
For this, for this one.
Right, no, I have not approached them in regards to that.
We don't know. I think, I think that's the LLC that now owns, they bought it around the time that we were dealing with the property.
This is regular land, not registered, right?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, you know, you've made a, if, if we could find that, we just couldn't find that half foot where, where it was. And I had talked, I've talked to John Glossa about it. If we could find it and it belonged to us, we'd be, we'd have a better situation with respect to 163. And if we had that, we might carve off, be able to carve off and add to the other. But it's, it's, we've not been able to find it. When we did the title, we were satisfied as to what is shown here, but didn't want to go out on a limb or have, ask Andy Murphy or John Glossa to go out on a limb in something they weren't comfortable with, they've got to sign it.
Yep.
And I had to sign a title search, so, we had, you know. So it'd be nice if we had it, but we're not sure. And we're not sure enough to represent to you that it's there. And that's one, you know, this, sometimes that happens. Some of these older lots, people have gone and done things on their own, and you wonder, you know, what they were thinking at the time. So, you know, if I may, you know, I'm happy to respond to some of the comments, but I guess we may not have made our way all the way through.
Yeah, we'll make our way through and then you can comment. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thanks, sir.
She had anything? Oh, Matt, you have?
No, that was my, that was my question.
Dan? Yeah. No, I don't have it.
I, I think that Ms. Churchill?
Dave, tell us how we can get there.
I'm trying. I think Ms. Churchill had made a comment about hardship. I mean, the hardship doesn't have to be unique. The hardship is a, is a hardship that should apply to anybody connected to the property. And, and I think we can establish that anybody connected with this property is faced with the fact, and applies to the other one too, you are short a very tiny amount. And, you know, another surveyor could come along and say, no, I'm satisfied, I, I've got what I, whatever my points. I mean, I had some surveying done on, on a property of mine recently, and the guy came up with something that was two tenths of a foot off from what I might have liked to have seen. And he says, well, you know, go back, sometimes, you know, somebody else would do it differently, they'd come back, and I said, look, you did it your way, you're going to leave it the way you found it. But another surveyor might come along and say, no, we're okay, we found it, we've, we've got our lines, we added all up, we've got, I mean, I don't know how they calculate, the arithmetic is beyond me most of the time. But we came up with it, and so we're representing as what we believe it is. And I did the calculations, and I'm like, this is, this is, you know, how often you get a case where you've got less than, in one case, less than two tenths of a percent that you're short? And the other one is .233, we're getting ahead of ourselves. But the hardship applies, no matter who owns this property, that they can't make the highest and best use of it. They can make a use of it, but they can't make the use that would be appropriate in today's circumstances based on cost, based on needs and all that. So I think there, you, there is a hardship there. So we get back to the, the initial question, I guess you had, of what is it about this lot that is unique, that doesn't affect the district generally, in terms of topography or shape or something? And, you know, we do have an easement that goes through, and if you look at that, that plan that I showed you, I think is on the table, it doesn't dead-end there, we'd go across the back of 163 also. So you've got an easement there, and for some reason, probably based on the existence of those lines, somebody changed, or somebody made the manufacturing district go there. So there's a condition that doesn't apply generally, because not everybody's going to have that in their backyard, having that. That is probably what prompted a, drawing a zoning line somewhere in there, because the gas company was back there.
I would disagree with you on that. They don't, not, having worked for the gas company, they do not draw zoning lines.
No, I'm not saying, they drew the zoning line, but the zoning line might have been drawn to insulate that?
Yeah.
When, when these different properties were developed over the years. So I'm saying that, you know, you look at that, you don't have, not too many people have easements running through their lots, particularly gas line easements, that, that could be a reason why the property was zoned differently. I mean, if it was all residential, and you still had a, you could still have a gas line through it, but for whatever reason, they drew a line there. We weren't there when they drew the line, but it was drawn. And so we have a situation that applies only to a few lots on that street, and in that neighborhood where they've got part of the lot within the district. Now, our lots, both lots, are more affected than the other ones. If you look at the plans, and I think it shows on that, there's only a small amount of those lots that are, that are within the manufacturing district. Our lot was laid out, these lots were laid out as larger lots, and they're more affected than these are. than these are. This one has 19,428 square feet, that is 14,0027, and that's 10,991. Depending upon what houses are there, they might be able to do a conversion anyway to a two-family. But they're not as affected as we are. We've got 7,000 square feet roughly tied into this, I don't have the exact numbers, but we have a significant portion tied into the manufacturing of what you would otherwise think is just a regular lot. And somebody looking at this would never know that that's even manufacturing. But that's the unusual condition based upon where the line was drawn. Is it, and it affects what we're able to do with that lot? So I think that, you know, you might look at that. Is that affecting topography, or soil conditions, or structures, or shape? I think you can argue that it affects the shape in that you've got a lot that looks like it's 22,000 square feet, but it really isn't because of that line. It really isn't 22,000 square feet. So that's the argument, you know. I think it is unusual, it's an unusual case, and it's not one of these things that fits in, you know, and I know, Ms. Churchill, you may have seen these, some of these cases where you have, say, a wet area. So we can't build a house where we'd like to build it or where the zoning tells us we should build it, we have to shift it because we have wet conditions on the ground. And it's a particular condition that affects, you know, a couple of lots. We don't have that. We don't have some crazy-shaped lot in terms of how that lot looks on paper, but we do have a different shape in terms of what's usable because of the way the line was drawn. So I'd ask you to consider that.
Alex, did you have something you wanted to comment on? No, okay, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So that's all.
Well, here's the thing, right? It's an undersized lot according to the zoning, right? We've got to reach 15, it's undersized, and you can't grant a variance on that. Is there any case law that you could provide to us that says, in a property that is in two zoning districts, can you grant a variance for something like this? Right? Because I, look, there's plenty of land there, there isn't, I think, anyone that's gone by it, we've all seen it. But is there any case law that can say that this is a case that you can grant a variance when it, when there's enough square footage, but it falls in two different zoning districts, that you can grant it, that that is allowed? Now, I did a little searching myself, and you probably have better resources than Rachel, that you can cite a case law that says, yes, this was granted in Amherst, Mass. in 1982, very similar.
Well, if you, you know, that would have, that would be a way to get over 2.4, which is, tells us we're stuck with the zoning for each separate section.
Right.
So you're looking for that, if there, if it exists.
Looking for that, or a surveyor that can find that six inches, and then you can make both lots over...
Perhaps, yeah.
37.5, they each gain 37.5 feet, and you don't, you just go to the building inspector. But it's just that...
After we go to the planning board, right, and rearrange some lines.
Yeah.
Well, that's an idea. And, Mr. Chairman, I would ask maybe that if you want to keep this open, see, we do that and continue it to the next meeting, and then we could see. If we can get it, great. If we can't, then we'll have to...
Either that or find a case that you can cite that say you...
That's what I mean, I look for the case.
Case, yeah.
And see if we can find it. I'll talk to John Gloss again, but we couldn't find it in the deeds.
Sometimes, maybe a second opinion, another surveyor can look at it and see something differently.
Well, I would ask then to continue, if the board would continue it to the next meeting, maybe we make some headway, maybe we don't. If we don't, we have decisions to make.
Yeah, no, I think the consensus of the board is, we'd like to grant this, but it's, as you know, it's, they tell us that granted variances should be done sparingly, and they hold us to a high bar.
I'm only asking for a couple of variances, that's pretty sparing. If that's...
But yeah, I'd love to, does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
No, I would love for you to find a way to make me comfortable.
I'm trying to. You know, this, this, this is a tricky situation, unusual situation. I understand the concerns you have. I wish there was clear cut of some of the cases, including, you know...
Move the, move the line back.
Have to go to town meeting for that one.
You'll only have to move that five feet back.
I know.
I know. Look, I think it's a good project. It's just they have the concern, there's the members there, and I don't want to see this go down. I want to find a vehicle that we can grant this.
What is the date of the next...
Yeah, what's the hearing date?
May 6, is it, or no?
I've got other stuff on that night.
You're here, you're here, you're here in the Gulf.
Couple of things, yeah.
You might be here all night that night.
I think it's...
Yeah, it is, May 6.
May 6?
Yeah.
So motion to continue to May 6, at 7:00?
Yeah, the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street. Rachel has made the motion to continue this.
Second?
Seconded by Rachel. Dan, to continue it to May 6?
Seconded by Shannon Greenwell?
Yes, Shannon, yep. And Dan votes yes. Matt?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So David, I'll read into the record the next one, and we'll continue that, if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
Because it's very similar.
Yeah, we'll open it and then continue it.
Yeah, we'll open it and then continue, yep.
That's fine.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on April 1, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. under request of Bruno Collantonio. With respect to the property located at Dean Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, this would be map 15, block 18, lot 9, in the general residence and manufacturing zoning district. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a variance pursuant to zoning bylaw section 10.2.2 and to master the law, chapter 48, section 10, to construct a two-family dwelling. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application, the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. Do we have a motion to continue this hearing till May 6, 7 p.m. at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street in Norwood?
And we've opened the hearing with that reading.
Yeah, it's open, yeah, with that reading.
And we do request the continuance on the same conditions, at the same date.
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved. Second?
Made by Shannon, seconded by Rachel. Rachel, to continue?
Yes.
Shannon, to continue?
Yes.
Matt and Dan? Yes, and that's continued to May 6, 7 p.m., 275 Prospect Street, Norwood Senior Center. Thank you, thank you.
You've given me some more homework.
Well, that's why you get the big bucks.
It's, Frank said, it's a tricky one in terms of even finding the six inches, but sometimes we can find it, sometimes we can't.
Look, you got, maybe you go over and give someone some land in the back there and have them swap something.
Well, we'll look at it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Look at it, it doesn't hurt to have another surveyor look at it.
Maybe, maybe. Okay, thank you all.
Surveyors out there that can find six inches. Thank you, Mr. Earn. Okay, we have, I think, meeting minutes?
From last month.
From last month. Where is my cover sheet? Where is my cover sheet? I was not present. So the meeting minutes from March 4, 2025, I was not present, I did read them, but I will not be voting on it. Is there any comments on the meeting minutes from March 4, 2025?
I don't have any. No. Move to accept as presented.
Motion has been made by Rachel to move as presented, seconded by Shannon. Matt on the minutes?
Yes.
Dan, you weren't here either. Were you here?
I was here.
Yeah, Dan on the minutes? Yes, thank you, two in a row. Good job. Shannon?
Yes.
And I abstain from that vote. Okay.
Are we current on our minutes?
I think we are.
It feels like it if that was last month.
I do want to let the board note, too, that we have a new minutes secretary, Amy Ivory, who, this is one of her first sets of minutes that she's undertaken, so...
And no comments.
And no comments.
We're excited to have her on board.
Thank you, Amy.
Tell her from the board she did a great job.
I will.
I'm going to get you home early, you look like you need some rest.
No, why? She must detox.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Matt. Rachel on adjournment?
Yes.
Shannon on adjournment?
Yes.
Matt on adjournment?
Yes.
And we are adjourned. Thank you, NCM. Thank you, Alex, again. And hopefully Mr. Earn will find...
Good job, Dan.
So I mean, you join us again next month, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, are you able to make that, May 6?
It's hard.